Thirty-nine, section twenty-three A, that a special meeting of the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority will be held on Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-four at six P M. The meeting will be held at two fifty-five Essex Street, first floor, Lawrence Mass, oh one eight four zero. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law during, uh, thirty A, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public meeting of the L R A is also being conducted by remote participation. Members of the public attending the meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment. Read the link below. Roll call.
President Gahara?
Hi.
Ramon Gahara?
Aye.
Sarah Perez?
Aye.
Eric Walker?
Present.
I'm gonna maybe, uh, I mean.
We'll, we'll, we'll read her in. All right, we have new business, L R A Board Review of Citizens Advisory Committee's Recommendations and Scoring Sheets pertaining to the R F P applications.
Who do you guys propose to start? Brian?
It's going online?
Yes.
Brian, he's. Let me see if we can. Right, Brian, online.
Hello?
Hey, Brian, can you hear us online?
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm pulling over right now to check my audio connection. But I'll be, I'll be with you in just a minute.
Okay, good. Can you show the chairperson?
Sure.
We're waiting for, uh, Brian.
Octavian, can you hear me?
Yeah, perfectly. We can, we can.
Okay, I can hear you guys as well. So I'm back.
Okay, we have a, uh, a note from a, uh, from Attorney DiAgostino. Uh, Andrea, can you please, uh, let, let me see if I can find the letter that is supposed to be sent.
Okay.
No.
I don't, I don't have.
I haven't received anything. So. Anyway, we, 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 uh, Brian?
Yeah.
We, we receive a text.
Attorney, um, I just received a text today at six oh six P M. And it says, Andrea, I sent an email to the L R A Chair, Vice Chair, members today, as well as Octavian and the mayor. It's regarding tonight's meeting, which is illegal. I'm just following up to see that they received it. And this.
Who said, who said that?
This came in at six oh six P M. by Attorney Richard DiAgostino.
I didn't receive anything.
I don't see anything, um.
How was this thing? I saw one, I just saw one now that came at three oh eight P M.
Okay, Ramon is saying that he received something.
Three oh eight P M.
Does, does he provide any, any reasons or any backup for that?
Uh, Ramon thinks that he has something. Let's see.
I have a letter. I can read it.
Yes.
Okay.
So, good afternoon, Chairman Walker, and honorable members of the L R A. This office represents Aquino L T D with regards to Aquino's formal proposal for redevelopment of Essex Street Lots two oh five, two oh nine dash two fifteen and two seventeen dash two twenty-three. As you are aware, Aquino's proposal is in response to your request for proposal issued July second, twenty twenty-four. It has been brought to my attention that a so-called special meeting has been called for this, for this evening at six P M. It is my further understanding that this meeting is intended to be held virtually. I review the notice of special meeting, C F dash, representing apparent violation of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. The Open Meeting Law requires that the notice must be posted forty-eight hours in advance for the meeting excluding Saturday, Sunday, and legal holidays. Most importantly, the notice must include along, it must include, along with date, location, time of the meeting, assessing of topics that the chair reasonably anticipates will be discussed at the meeting. Three A, section twenty B, empty to that. That contains regu- regulations promulgated by Attorney General provide further that the public bodies are required to list topics with sufficient speci- specificity to reasonably advise the public of the issues to be discussed at the meeting. Nine forty, C M R, twenty-nine point zero three. The L R A's notice of special meeting does not meet this criteria and as such violating the open meeting law. The notice referenced to the subject matter is overbroad and contains no specific particularity to what the Citizens Advisory Committee is referenced. What Citizens Advisory Committee recommendations are being considered? What and where the availability accompanying documents, documentation of those recommendations and scoring sheets is located for public consumption, review, and knowledge? And two, what specific projects, specific R F P, applicant-specific projects that are under consideration for this meeting? The Commonwealth Division of Open Government has made determination regarding such meeting posting violations. This division has issued a series of decisions that the matters included on the meeting notice must be itemized in specific detail rather than listing only boilerplate headings or setting for simple statements of the subject matter anticipated to be discussed. Specific items to be discussed must be individually listed and identified. If it is anticipated that votes may be taken, such information should also not be included on the meeting notice. In the Massachusetts decisions of Digtton Police Station Building Committee, O M L, two thousand thirteen dash forty-six, it was determined that a meeting notice must be tailored toward the public's audience that is unfamiliar with the matters to be discussed rather than to be sent into the municipal employees and parties that often attend such meetings. It continues, additionally, on Friday, November first, one twenty-four, contacted Chairman Walker, stating that this office represents on Ada L T V in that we have serious concerns about one of the alleged proponents reached contracting for the hearing reference Essex Street project. Among the concerns I raised included that in the Essex Street R F P response, the L R A was considering a proposal that did not meet the minimum qualifications required in the R F P. It should have been summarily and immediately disqualified. There was no financial qualification information included to make proposals inadequate information was further provided after the deadline to submit a response to the R F P. Continued consideration and inclusion of this proposal is a direct violation of the requirements of M L G, thirty B, and the L R A's own requirement in seeking response to the specific R F P. I will define all of sir violations with specific, with specific specificity on the separate cover in a certified letter to the authority. It is my understanding that a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee immediately raised the violation concerns in writing to your attention. After this writing, there has been no response or address to eliminating the authority's liability. If it continues to ignore these troubling concerns, the foundation for these qualifications of the proponent is abundantly clear just on its face. Ultimately, we seek only to assure the consideration of proposals that meet all lawful qualifications of which my client is one. Though it is not our intention, proper legal action, certification to the appropriate enforcement authorities will ensure. If the issues, concerns raised at their hearing continue to be ignored, as time is of the essence, I await your response forward regarding the notice of the meeting that complies with the Commonwealth's Open Meeting Law. Thank you.
What was it?
Okay.
Um, attorney and chairman, Marisol posted this November seventh, twenty twenty-four, at two fifty-four P M.
Right.
At the city, on the city council.
Our attorney here, do we see any, uh, violation as this attorney is alleging here?
No, uh, the only violation I can see so far is, is his, uh, direct communications with members of the L R A and the staff when he knows that, uh, this organization is represented by counsel. So I'm gonna take that up with, uh, Mr. DiAgostino tomorrow. Um, as far as I'm concerned, uh, this meeting is intended to, to start figuring out what the procedure is gonna be for, uh, going through the Citizen Advisory Committee score sheet, uh, decide what the process is gonna be, um, who is gonna be invited back, if anyone, for, for more, uh, presentation and, uh, to lay out some basic procedures. Tonight is not to, to go through specific proposals, correct?
No, uh, correct. So. Right. Attorney, can you instruct this person to stop contacting me at all and to go through you, please?
Yeah, no, that is, uh, I'm sorry that he's doing that, uh, Mr. Chairman. That's just really, it's so inappropriate to be doing that, uh, and, and Mr. DiAgostino has been around a long time and has represented municipalities. He should know better. Um, that's just really inappropriate, but you know, this, this is a case where, you know, I, I think unless and until the bid is awarded to this particular applicant, we're gonna be dealing with this, uh, this criticism throughout the process. It's this started about a month ago and has continued ad nauseam at all levels of, you know, from the mayor's office. I know that this applicant has reached out to other government officials at the state level, everything that uh, can possibly be done to try to ensure that this, uh, proposal is the one that gets picked is, has been, been done here. So it's unfortunate because it should be, it should be reviewed on the merits. And if the other competing proposal is so lacking in financial back, backup that it, uh, uh, you know, it's gonna be scored appropriately and it's never gonna be approved. So, I mean, I just give that to, as background to some of the members and maybe some of the staff that hasn't been following this, uh, this saga over the last several weeks. It's been, it's been a repetitive thing and, uh, so as far as I'm concerned, there's nothing wrong with, with, uh, having this meeting tonight to talk in general terms about the process and what we're gonna be doing going forward to, uh, get further into the, uh, the proposals. Um, and, 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 you know, Marisol posted the, the notice properly. And so I, I don't know what else to say about it. There's just nothing, nothing wrong with, uh, with the meeting that's being held right now.
Excellent. So as you communicate this, I want you to convey my general annoyance since we haven't reviewed anything as of yet. Um, we put in place the City Citizens Advisory Committee to be the first step in this process and our intention is to be above board with all of this. So now I'm annoyed because I feel like it's a hindrance to us beginning the process um, of a completely transparent process based upon one person's, uh, assertion that another bid, which if they're saying that it's not proper, it's gonna be thrown out anyway according to the merit, but we haven't seen anything yet. So now I'm annoyed. I'm very annoyed. So we will continue our meeting under advisement from our, our counsel that this has been properly uh, post, posted and it's open and now I'm angry. So let's begin. Okay, Mr. Chairman, uh, the, uh, I there was a series of, um, uh, questions that were asked, uh, for this, a citizen advisory committee score, yeah, it was a score sheet and based on the questions. Uh, and the, uh, Mr. James Carers indicated that he's gonna prepare a, a scoring sheet. You know, summary of what the, um, the members have, have commented and voted for. Okay. Uh, there were seven, I believe, seven, uh, individuals that submitted, but he didn't, he didn't have clarification on their opinion. Got it. So he said that he can have that done probably, uh, tonight or tomorrow morning. And he will, uh, basically submit that to you for your, for your review. Okay. In the meantime.
If I could, uh,
Oh, James.
Just give you a, a, update. Uh, what, what I have is an initial, an initial, uh, count of, of the recommendations from the C A C members. There are a number of score sheets that are problematic. The problems are with the score sheets. Either the person did not sign it. There are a couple of score sheets where they were not signed or the score sheet was illegible. Um, also, the score sheet would indicate which proposal they were, um, grading, but the reference to what the proposal was did not match up with any of the projects. So it's hard, a, a few of the score sheets, it was hard to determine, well, who are they grading? Because the, there was a mistitle of, of, on the, on the score sheet. We have been working diligently the last two days to try to figure out, uh, trying to read illegible's signatures a- as well as, uh, so we, we have about a half a dozen tens still that we're trying to reconcile. The final issue is there are a couple of proposals where I only have a handful of score sheets for a specific proposal. So I need to coordinate with, uh, Andrea and Marisol to go over to make sure that I have received all the score sheets. I know they believe that they sent it all. I believe that they sent it all. But for some reason, there are a couple of proposals, proposers that there are very few scorecards that have been submitted. So we need to go back and double check. I wanna make this a hundred percent accurate. We're, we're about ninety-five percent of the way there, but there are still things that we need to handle. Uh, second is, as you know, on the score sheet, the, uh, uh, scorer could, uh, add additional comments. Again, with those additional comments, because of the handwriting or printing of, of some of the scorecards, it was very hard to make it, make out what was being written. So we've done our best in terms of, uh, uh, typing that up. So I have a document with all of the comments. And then the third, third document that I have is my evaluation of the, uh, of the, uh, proposals. What I saw, you know, was the due diligence, if you will, of reviewing each one of the proposals. So I provide this with you that we have three things. We have the scorecards, the grades, they're given by the C A C members. We have a document of the comments made by the C A C members and then a third document of my, uh, review of the proposals as well. And I, I share that with you as you discussed tonight, the process that you want to, uh, uh, proceed with. Um, and, and to keep that into consideration of the work that has been done, but also what else you need from me to be able to move ahead in the process. And finally, I do have a PowerPoint presentation and I don't have to show it or you let me know of, of the initial scores that we've been able to calculate, uh, uh, based on, uh, th- those uh, scorecards that we've been able to review, which is the vast majority of them, over four hundred of them have been entered into our spreadsheet. And then what I did is I averaged the score from all of the proposals from, from all of the, the C A C members for each proposal. So I, for each site, we now have, you know, a score, uh, for, for each proposer. At this point, they're not final because I need again to, uh, reconcile those issues. That's a lot I'm throwing at you, but I, I just wanted to make sure that you understand what's available, uh, as you consider your next steps in the process and also, uh, what direction you'd like to give, uh, uh, staff and myself to provide you with the information that you need to make these decisions going forward.
Well, now, James, uh, and this is what my, my recommendation is as well. One thing is the C A C. C A C had their opportunity to review the, uh, their, the different proposals. Uh, but I think that the board itself need to look at each one of the proposals, evaluate the proposals, compare, uh, probably in the, 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 the scoring from the C A C. Okay, the score sheet based on, on their understanding of each one of the projects. I think Ramon, you had, I think, uh, Ramon and Tedra had two comments that you proposed, May. Uh, Ramon, uh, you told me today, uh, that the, uh, uh, how are we gonna look at each one of, I know, if, if the, if the companies are, are coming individually to the L R A Board and new presentation for the L R A Board. Um, I think, um, it, it depends on you as the board. If you feel that you have additional questions that you would like to ask, uh, I think that you should be at liberty to, to do so and call the different companies in. We're looking at the, you can look at the, the proposals again, they're online. And then you can, if you have additional questions, we can make arrangements for, uh, the companies to come before you. I think we can discuss that. James, I have a question.
Yes.
In going through the proposals thus far and in having question about, you know, particularly a proposal that didn't meet certain requirements, um, would it be apropos for us to disqualify any proposals so that you're, we're weeding out towards uh, basically a fundamental, uh, ending to this, like, uh, uh, you know, to be able to really discuss with uh, these projects and these, these, uh, these, these groups that will be considered? You know, it, can we begin with the information that we have to say, well, this proposal, thank you for the proposal, but it didn't meet certain requirements and we can move on? You know, when it weeded down, uh, basically, uh, proposals?
I, I think overall the quality of certain proposals, in my opinion, and then comparing it to the C A C initial scoring, there are certain proposals that I don't believe resonate to a level of serious consideration. But that, that's gonna be up to you if you want to continue to look at them. Um, but there are some proposals that just really don't meet this, the strength test, if you will. You have a lot of strong proposals, in my opinion, some very, very good proposals. Uh, there are a handful, I would say, that probably if, if, if I were the king of the world, I would not necessarily, uh, consider any further. Uh, partly because of the, the lack of, of specificity and also the quality of the response in terms of, uh, their vision, uh, you know, articulating, uh, and making their case. Uh, just overall, there are a handful that are not that, that, that strong. But yes, there are some that are, are, is, are missing information just relative to the comment of the attorney made via letter from the attorney about one of the submissions should have been disqualified. I don't believe, and, and, and Brian, help me out here, I don't believe we said in the R F P that uh, we have, I think the L R A Board has the right to disqualify anybody based on, or, on, on the, uh, uh, criteria that we're reviewing. But it doesn't say you must disqualify, uh, a, a, a proposer because they didn't have financial information. You're not under obligation, staff is not under obligation to say, no, you, you know, we can't consider you because you didn't do this. You have that, you know, option to do so. Um, long would it answer, and I may give, get too much information, but, uh, but, uh, I, I wanted to express, uh, my feeling in terms of the weaker proposals that are there.
To the Chair, Mr. Caris. And I, and I, may I ask you a question, sir? Mr. Caris, to the Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I wanna piggyback off what Ramon and Ms. Mark were saying. In terms of parameters, I know that, for example, there's a certain vision and, uh, let, let's say, four corners of that urban renewal plan. Is there anything that we as a board independently criteria that we should set, um, that's independent of that scoring, uh, criteria that's been set? Or are there, or is there any determinative, uh, facts or, or direction that we should take? As an example, ju- just as an example, well, would it, it not make sense to bring these parties in front of this board as the deliberative body in order to hear them expound on that vision? Or do you feel that the twenty minutes that they had in front of the C A C, the fifteen minutes that they had in front of the C A C should be the determinative presentation?
So, uh, uh, thank you for the question. It's a good one, but I also have heard two questions. So the first part of it is you, you, your vision as it relates to the urban renewal plan and how these proposals fit in with the urban renewal plan. You are at a junction point where you're about, where, where embarking have be- begun an update to the urban renewal plan. This is gonna take us the next three, four months. Um, I've, I've now interviewed one of, uh, two of the, the board members. I look forward to the interviewing the, the, the remainder and I will be interviewing many other key stakeholders in the community relative to. relative to the updated urban renewal plan. So in, in a sense, you have to project forward either as individual members, as board, as a board, what is it that we want to focus on and what is important to us in downtown Lawrence? You know, versus what the urban renewal plan had said in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen? You know, for housing, for instance, do we want to focus on market rate housing? Do we want to focus on workforce housing? Do we want to focus on affordable? No, we want to do mixed income housing. There are those on the CAC that said, we shouldn't do any housing. It creates more density and more traffic, and we don't have parking. So don't do any housing at all. So I think individually and as, as a board, you need to think about what are your priorities moving forward? Thinking, you know, our next urban renewal plan. And how do these proposals fit within that vision that you have for an updated urban renewal plan? The second part, what I heard you ask is, you know, how, how, how to proceed. My sense is, is if, if I were you, I would shortlist based on the CAC recommendations as well as you reading through the comments that they provided, as well as the report that I can provide you. And come up with a shortlist and say, we'd like to hear more from the following eight, ten, twelve, whatever it is. And not open it up to twenty presentations, but open it up to a, a, a shortlist for you to determine on who you want to hear further from. There was one site, for instance, there were five proposers. Three of them, the initial scores, and I think this will hold up no matter, you know, whatever, whatever else we add. They were within one half of, of one point away from each other. Ninety point six, ninety point four, ninety four, ninety point two with their scores. So you can't rely on strictly who is in the lead there, because it's essentially the same score. If I were the board, I would want to hear from those three top, and the other two were in the seventies. So you may want to lop them off and shortlist the top three for that site to give you an example.
Thank you, James.
I, I think in, in moving forward, we should begin to examine these proposals and those who didn't meet the proposals and got low scores from this, from the advisory committee. I think we should, we should, we should start there. It's up to the members of the board, Chair, you know, we all have equal vote here. But I think that to, it's more fair to the people whose proposals may actually get considered. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, for you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I agree that in the interest of time and in the interest of trying to get something accomplished, start weeding those proposals that have no chance
Right.
that, that don't meet the, the criteria or the, the interpretation by the CAC. So I'm a hundred percent with you, you gotta start somewhere, and that's, that's the best way to start.
Okay. Mr. Attorney.
Yes.
So if we begin there, again, we have been contacted by an attorney in favor of one of our proposal writers. I, I want to make sure that as we move forward, that we're moving forward judiciously and appropriately, especially since, you know, sort of unbeknownst to us, we've already been contacted. So.
Yeah, well, I will certainly, I'll certainly reach out to Mr. DiAgostino tomorrow, not only to, you know, discuss some of the things that I mentioned earlier, but also to, I guess, summarize what has been discussed tonight and assuming nothing is gonna change over the course of the meeting here, that, you know, there's, there's a, a plan in place. The LRA is gonna start doing its own homework here with, with the benefit of the CAC reports and Mr. Caris's report, individual reports as well. And, and we're gonna start, we're gonna start sifting through. And then I think it sounds to me like there's gonna probably be, we'll be scheduling meetings at some point in the near future to discuss some of these things, perhaps to invite proposers back for another maybe more in-depth presentation, Q and A, open to the public as well. So I'll explain that to, to him so that he understands and maybe feels a little bit more comfortable, and his client will feel a little bit more comfortable that what we're doing here is, you know, is, is by the book. And, and it sounds to me like it is. And, and I guess all I will say is, I, I look forward to reading all of the reports that James is gonna, as James is gonna provide. And if there's anything that I can help with, as you guys are going through these, if you have questions about certain things, zoning regulations, and how certain aspects of certain proposals might be received by the city, you know, what, what the zoning requirements may be, or, or regulations may be for a particular area, you know, just let me know on that. But, but I mean, otherwise, I guess it's not my job to, not my job to chime in on the merits of any of the proposals. I'm just here to help you guys work through them and, and, and come to some conclusions one way or the other. So just let me know what you need.
All right, sounds good. So I don't know if we're gonna do this tonight, but I think we should start, we should work our way up. Let's start with the proposals that struggle and match that against the opinions of the advisory committee to make a determine, a determination whether or not those proposals will forward with anyone. I think, my opinion, that's where we should begin. I don't think we should begin that tonight. I think that we should also give James the opportunity to knit up and finish up the work of the advisory committee as best you can so that we have a whole score sheet to go from, from, from this point forward. So once we sort of thank people for, because it's a lot of work, and you expose yourself and your company to proposing with this, and we appreciate their interest, but.
Money, money.
And money, absolutely.
That's something very, very that we need to consider, right? Because they work very hard at it.
Absolutely. And who knows, like, we're, we have a whole city to, to revitalize. And I don't want anybody to get such a sour taste if they don't take a stand at some of the other things that we're gonna do in the future.
Right, I agree with your assessment, Mr. Chair. I also agree to think that in the interest of time, working with Mr. Mr. Caris to give us a detailed report on what, you know, what some projects scored would be ideal.
Right.
And starting from the bottom, eliminating those so they can move on to other things.
I don't even want to call it the bottom, because there's, there's implications in saying that. Starting from the proposal that would need more work, right, exactly.
Yes.
So I, I think, I apologize. The idea being that whatever we do, I feel should be across the board. I know that we do want to weed out these scores from, at least trying to get to that determination.
Right.
The question that needs to be asked is, how equitable is that process? And how equitable, how equitable is it to, to the, to the presenters? And again, that trump agent type.
Right.
Where there are considerations that, or sources, methods, agencies, that intellectual property nature.
Right.
And some of these presenters were somewhat clear to divulge in a public study, unless it's a project. Now, this is, in my opinion, somewhat a delicate track that should be followed.
So here's where we are. We haven't addressed any of the proposals yet. We haven't eliminated anyone yet. Okay, we're gonna begin that process. All right, I do think that we have to consider what you're saying also, but we also, it's a proposal. It's like when you apply to a college, you have to put your best foot forward, or you're, you're not gonna have considerations in your favor. But as of now, we haven't touched anything yet. But I do think that as we move forward, we're gonna start with the proposals that are, how do we describe?
No, the proposals are first of all, based on the urban renewal plan. Unless on the equitable, compact transit oriented, that we have posted.
Right.
Which meet and which do not meet the criteria.
Right, and will base, will base, unfortunately, the elimination of certain projects based upon that and the CDC scoring to move forward.
Right.
They need to align with the LRA's vision for the urban renewal plan.
If you don't align with it, with it, with the criteria, I think that before we even start comparing proposals that have equal merit, we'll wait.
Right.
Okay, then, Mr. Chair, when do you want to start that process? I mean, James, you said you needed how many additional days for your recommendation?
I, I, I would like to confer with staff tomorrow to make sure that I have in my possession all of the scorecards. I believe that they sent all of them, but there is some significant gaps. So I need to coordinate with them tomorrow. I, I would think by the beginning of next week, I could have everything straightened out and have all the reports ready by next week.
Okay, so we, we have the holiday season that's coming upon us. I would like to get another meeting for this in, but it, it really, we have Thanksgiving coming up, and soon thereafter, we have Christmas coming up. So I think that Marisol's done a great job of contacting the board, getting these meetings in and having quorum. But I think once James have that score sheet situation completed, we should have another meeting.
She has one scheduled already.
Scheduled for.
The November twentieth.
November twentieth.
I would definitely have everything ready by the twenty, before, that's much time before the twentieth, be a review of everything, so you'd have a couple of days to review.
Okay.
Actually, Marisol posted so that we're.
Not yet, but she will, she'll get it in within the timeframe, so it's a legal meeting.
Hello? Me, Sarah, how are you? Question, next, the next meeting is gonna be at the city, at the chambers? Is that how we got a plan for next meeting?
Um, I, I don't think so. I don't think so. With the chambers, we can start with a, with a chamber and beginning the new year. We can do that.
Okay.
But in the meantime, we, we have to, there might be renderings, or that might be other stuff that needs to be presented, and, and we can share the documents. And I don't see that of a big of a concern for the LRA, this, while we're working on each one of the projects. We need paper, we need copies, who have to be presented, we have to use our computer with some of the other presentations.
Right.
So we can, we can do that starting in January. Are you there, Sarah?
Yes, I am. It's a, for, for January, after we picked the, the different projects, I guess.
Yeah, because we, we have to also meet with zoning board and planning board. Because one of the incentives that we spoke about and we shared with all the, the, the groups that submitted letters of interest when we met with them individually was that we were, we were considering the pre-permitting process. Okay, so the, both boards need to, especially the planning board needs to be informed and aligned. And what I've spoken with both chairperson, or at least one of them, is that we're going to try to combine both and do it in a public setting. I don't think that would be a problem, right, Brian?
Uh, just for like a preliminary presentation, not, not an actual, not, not a case before them to vote up or down, right? I mean.
Right, correct. But in general.
Oh, that would, that'd be, I think that'd be great to invite them to a meeting to talk about the process here, once we, we get a little bit further down the road, absolutely.
Sounds good. Okay, so I. Okay, I think that, so we, we have a plan in place to begin this process. We have an attorney is gonna reach out to whoever's representative has some questions about the process. And we're set to meet again on the twentieth, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Chairman, before you, can I just let him know? Today we received, just about an hour ago, from an applicant that submitted the RFPs, just some subsequent documents that are confidential documents. I don't know if you want me to have those ready for the twentieth meeting? If you want me to give them to you, and you, however you want me to do it, do you want me to have? I just got them a little bit ago.
I think that you should process them for the twentieth, check in with the attorney.
Okay.
I don't want to touch anything yet until we go through a process so that when we're called to question that it was completely above board. This is why I said we haven't voted on anything, we haven't disqualified anyone yet, but we will begin on the twentieth to go through that process.
Okay, I'll tell, I'll call Attorney Corrigan tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
I just, I just caution you on any information that's received outside of the RFP process could, could, I, I, I would be very careful with it and absolutely just let the attorney see that information. And I, I, I think you're opening up to a potential criticism, if not challenge from other proposers who, if they discover additional information was being reviewed that they submitted beyond the deadline date. So, you know, if you ultimately get into trans, award this proposer, and then you may want to look at that confidential information at that point, but I, I would stay away from it, or at least let the attorney handle any, any reference to that information.
Okay, I agree.
Brian, did you hear that?
Yes, yep, that makes perfect sense to me. I'll, I'll.
Yeah, it's sealed.
Talk to Andrea tomorrow.
Yeah, James and, and Brian, and then to the board. One thing I, I, and this is for the public in general, the LRA has the powers within the procurement that is laid out by the state to include certain, certain negotiations with private developers that have submitted their proposal. So certain things are went through the RFP process, but they may change. Correct, Brian? When it comes to certain negotiations with the developers? Or whoever is awarded.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, that's a separate, separate phase of the process. And the RFP, I, I believe, leaves that very, very generally. In fact, doesn't get into that at all. So, yeah, we're definitely free to establish our own guidelines at that point. You know, once we get to the stage where, you know, the proposals have been thoroughly reviewed and the board presumably comes up with, with one or more that it wants to move forward with, then we're, yeah, we're free. We're, again, we're, we, we, you know, we, we do operate under guidelines, but, but we're exempt from certain provisions of chapter thirty B in the disposition of land pursuant to an urban renewal plan approved by the state, so.
Correct. And I want.
Yeah, so that's it.
And the reason why I'm saying that is because I'll give you a good example, the, the results can now property, the Mary Mac paper. Site, there's additional information that we met today with, with Mary Mac Valley Planning Commission, we're working with EPA, we're working with DEP. Ramon, you know about that process?
Yes.
There's certain, there was a lot spoken. And the reason why I mention this is because you can have a site that tomorrow, even though the developer or investors in the project may have gone to their financial institution and gave a number, but then the numbers and may change, and based on that is, it's, it's, they may or may not permit to it. So there's additional information that we are going to have as well for the twentieth. For clarification, we met with, basically, MBPC, Mary Mac Valley Planning Commission is working with us. And they will be happy to provide us with status updates on that site in particular. And with that site, it might be also other. And with that site, there might be also other sites uh that uh that things may change.
Sounds good.
Okay, I'd entertain emotions close. All right, roll call. Adina, Sarah, Peretz.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Uh yes.
Yes, we are closed. Sarah, thank you for joining us. Everyone, thank you for coming.
See you next week.